And it also may be a great cost-saving feature as far as not having to pay a lot of overtime in the evenings. So we're trying this out for a period of six months. And welcome to Good Morning Strathmore. We decided to have a sleepover last night and it started off with councillor Peterson telling us stories and within a minute, most of us were asleep. And today's episode of Good Morning Strathmore, we're going to do, councillor Bauer is going to be doing breakfast bagels with tofu and soy. So stay around for that recipe. She's going to be doing some demonstration cooking. We've also got councillor, former deputy mayor, Jason Montgomery, he's going to be talking about breakfast edibles and how to start a happy, happy, happy day. So if you're at home and you're pouring yourself a coffee and you want to get a Bailey's, we'll wait for you. Hopefully you've got your Bailey's by now, that'll help this meeting go by quicker. As far as the agenda goes, is there anything from administration? And God bless you. So that brings us to delegations. We have no delegations.
Should I confirm?
Oh, sorry, deputy mayor Corbier.
I confirm the, or I moved to confirm the agenda.
Oh, thank you very much.
As presented.
So we have a motion to confirm the agenda, all in favor. And that motion is carried. And now, we have no delegation, so we're moving on to the confirmation of minutes. And we're looking at the adoption of the committee of the whole meeting minutes for December 11th, 2019.
Some of yours?
Thank you. We have a motion from Storytime with Aunt Denise. And all in favor. And that motion is carried. And now I'm looking for a motion to go into committee of the whole.
Some of?
Thank you. We have a motion to go into committee of the whole, all in favor. And that motion is carried. We're now in committee of the whole. And on unfinished business, if I could just interject, Jennifer, I have something that I just wanted to say and maybe make a quick presentation. To the public at home and the huge gallery that we have in front of us, we just recently hosted an incredible event in our town with Rogers Hometown Hockey. We think it was a great thing to showcase our town and an area as far as hockey goes. And we know that hockey's very, very important and very popular in town. We were very pleased with the national coverage our town got, as well as the video they had done. And I was really impressed with the hosts, especially Ron McLean, who had done so much homework on our town and area. And he was able to focus on that in his meet and greet and in various interviews he had given. So we're very happy that we got a chance to do hometown hockey. As a mayor, I also received a little bit of swag, but I didn't really do much except for falling repeatedly on a Saturday night, learning how to skate again. But councillor, actually I should say deputy mayor Corbier represented us and went to quite a few meetings and was involved quite a bit in the hometown hockey planning process, as well as the weekend. So I have a little swag that I would like to present to you. Hometown Hockey gave us a hockey coat, so.
I'll take off my robe.
It might be a little big. That's pretty good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Awesome.
So a little surprise for our deputy mayor.
So jolly.
And that'll keep you warm today. I won't hear you whining about how cold it is. And we have no further unfinished business, so thank you. Thank you for all your efforts and the time you put in. I know hockey is a passion and it's such a huge part of our Strathmore recreational area and the needs for Strathmore. We know in hockey, they have to cap their enrollment, so we understand the need for more ice and how important hockey is and bring it to our community. So thank you for all your time and effort.
Thank you. That's awesome.
Did you want to say a few words?
I can. I really thank you for the coat and everything else. Like, it was a huge, I think it was a huge success. Like, I know the people that attended, you know, it wasn't, it wasn't about, like, adults or anything else. It was about the kids. You know, it was, I think it was a huge success. You know, the minor hockey was still playing games all weekend and stuff like that, so I know some teams didn't get to come. But the whole thing was uplifting for the community, you know? And you'll never get what we actually got from the event. You know, like Scotiabank donated $15,000 to minor hockey. Huge uplift and huge boost to that program. You know, just some of the things that, you know, it was just unexpected. Look at the charity hockey game. Great turnout. Great, I know everybody who was involved in that, like, had a terrific time. And I actually would love to make that an annual event. I just, the things that it brought out in the community and everything else, that was priceless. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you for that and thank you again for your time and efforts. And we hope that it was an economic boost for many of our businesses, restaurants, bars, hotels and motels. We think it has injected some, some good money into that economy. Thank you. Councillor Sobel.
Just a question, I wonder if anybody knows what the outcome of the charity hockey game was? I know that was a fundraiser and it was very well-attended. Do anybody know if we've got any results on it?
I have an idea.
Sure.
I know, like, even just by the door, I know $1,000 was raised at the door, plus the food bank campers were full. The 50/50 obviously meant the $500 half and, or whatever it was, like, you know, I know that. I don't know if there was anything else from that or not, but Tracy, was there anything else to add for that?
Yes. Your worship, our total cash contribution was $1,485, plus an entire truckload of food for the food bank.
That's an amazing thing to have happen in our community in a variety of ways. That brings us to items from administration. Item 6.1, Even More Strathmore. Geoff Person, good morning. Welcome.
Good morning, your worship. And it's not on here. So, thank you very much for giving me some time this morning. In December, we were contacted by a local business who had said that they were affected by the road closure on Park Lane Drive. And so as a team, we came up with what we think is a pretty solid strategy to not just help that business, but businesses across Strathmore. We're calling it Even More Strathmore, and it's a shop local campaign. I think there's five reasons why we think that a shop local campaign is an important thing that we can do right now. And the first one actually comes back to hometown hockey, and that's that, you know, we see from events like hometown hockey that people and businesses in Strathmore want to support Strathmore. And what a shop local campaign does is, from an economic point of view, it gives a channel to direct that, that kind of support. There's no other town policy or program that could actually deliver the kind of impact to our local businesses that a shop local campaign can. There's about a half a billion dollars worth of purchasing power in the town, and this is a way of directing it back towards the businesses that are within the limits here. There's a local multiplier effect, and that's where dollars that are spent locally get recycled locally. So, you know, like, this is, this is something that, you know, like, when we talked with the chamber, this is something that's a priority for them and they really want to, like, they're very excited that this is something that can help accelerate that, that program for them. There's been multiple surveys and studies that have been done, you know, across the US and Canada that show that for, like, for across a region, cities and towns that don't have a shop local campaign have a lower, lower economic growth than cities and towns that have a shop local campaign. So this is, this is something that there is, there's research behind it. And that's, just finally to address why we want to do more than just like a one-and-done, this is something that we want to do across the entire year and then transfer, hopefully, to the chamber. And that's that a long-term campaign creates a long-term behavior shift. So what the campaign is, is it basically splits into two key tactics. The first one, it comes back to what we discussed with the Communication Strategic Plan in December, and that's, it's leveraging the physical assets that are within the town. But rather than just focusing on the, like, the town's facilities, we want to do decals throughout the businesses in town. It's a six-inch by six-inch window decal. It's a really simple message and we've, we included two drafts there in terms of design. Either one would have four versions of the, of a key message, just so that the message can relate back to the type of business, whether it's a chain business, a small mom-and-pop shop, a service business, or whether they just want to say thank you for shopping local. The physical side of this is really important because, you know, like, you know, we know that there's, you know, 13,000 people in town. That's 13,000 people who are interacting with the shops. The more times that we can hit them with that message of Even More Strathmore and Shop Local, the more times that we know that they're going to, that they're going to engage with the campaign. The second side is a digital side, and I don't think you can talk about any kind of campaign in 2020 without talking about social media. We're, the backbone of that is that we're going to do a digital decal. So it's just like the digital version of what you're seeing in front of you that we'd be posting on Facebook, Twitter and Instagram. Partly, you know, because it's, it's another way to reinforce the same visual message, partly because we know that, you know, online, we're able to also provide a bit more context and instruction around the campaign. We're supplementing that with a contest. And this, I think that this is a really interesting and unique way to use social media, because we can, we can say shop local all we want and we can, we can reinforce that message and that will have an effect. But at the end of the day, what this contest does is that it encourages the people who are using these businesses and these shops and finding great service, or they're finding a really interesting product, or, you know, a cool find, or something like that. And they're, they're encouraged to post about it and use the hashtag Even More Strathmore. And then we can help amplify that post online. So instead of just the town saying, hey, shop local, we think it's really great that you're shopping in Strathmore, then suddenly it becomes about, like, our actual residents who are actually saying, hey, I found this really cool thing, or I had this great experience. And that's that third-party kind of endorsement that really drives people to change their shopping patterns. We want to do the, like, the first run of this campaign for five weeks and it starts, you know, pretty much as soon as we can get wheels rolling here. We'd run it until the end of February, have a contest judge then. We've spoken with the chamber. The chamber, like I said, is really excited about this. This is something that I think is a very low-cost but high-impact campaign, and it's something that's scalable as we grow through it. So I'm, it's something that I think is really exciting and it's something that I think can, can help us solve the problem that was identified in, in December, but deliver good for the whole town. I'd love to know if you have any questions about this.
Thank you, Geoff. Comments, questions? Deputy Mayor Corbier.
Thank you, worship. And thank you. I love this campaign, I do, because it's not, you know, the online stores that are sponsoring and even supporting your local organizations and stuff like that, you know? And I think if they're, if, if they can be more successful, more of that'll be given back to the community, so I completely do agree with this. My, my other question was, I know that we were going to be doing some kind of seminars or whatever, or learning things for the businesses. Is this kind of incorporated into this at all? Just about being like a successful business, we had talked about it. Do you know if any of that's going on at the same time?
As far as I know, that's not going on at the same time as this. This campaign, like, we'd run until the end of February and then we're going to run three more versions of it this year. So I think that's certainly as, like, once we've got the plans finalized for the, the other service sides of, like, of the, the learning opportunities, we can integrate that in. You know, I think that that becomes, like, it becomes, it makes the campaign that which was successful.
Absolutely. Yep.
Thank you very much. Councillor Sobel.
Thank you and thanks, Geoff. I want to commend Geoff and his team for, for the way this is being run out. We've, as, as he mentioned, we, we met as part of the chamber and our chairperson, Haley Poirier, was, was present. And we were able to take this back to the, to our board of directors, actually, already. And there was great enthusiasm for this. Of course, when, there's been no, no board motion yet, but there was nothing but praise and, and, and support for this program. And we look forward to eventually taking over the, the program later this year and probably even running it out to the, to the county. It's, it just makes a lot of sense, a program like this is very supportive. And, yeah, and I just, the other comment in regards to councillor Corbier's message about, about seminars, et cetera, the chamber is actually working on, on, on programs to, to work on improving, especially customer service in regards to the, to the, to the businesses. And there's, there's a plan in place that's just being worked on now. So, very supportive. Thank you very much for all your work on this. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Sobel. Councillor Bauer.
Thank you, worship. Geoff, I just want to commend you for taking lemons and making lemonade, like you really have. You were presented with an opportunity and rather than dismiss it and say, that's the way things are, we're building a town hall, sorry for your loss, you took an opportunity and really stepped up. And I really like that you not only included the downtown people that are being affected, but the, our entire business community. Sometimes we have criticism that we're focusing too much on the downtown and we're forgetting about some of our box stores and our, and our Highway One businesses. This includes everyone, and I think the chamber's new move to include everyone and give value for these types of propositions, this is all being incorporated. I also think it's really innovative that you, rather than rewarding customers for visiting the shops, which typically we've done before. If you visit, you get a passport and you get entered into a draw, but you actually are asking customers to share stories that will, that will attract more visitors to their business. And that's what we're about in a small town. We're about storytelling, right, councillor Peterson? We're about sharing experiences. And I think that in lieu of people going, especially during the shopping season, so much online shopping is happening. You know, for us to focus on what you can purchase locally is so important for our townspeople and to support our, our small businesses. So I just have a couple, if I may, please. Be so bold as to give you feedback. I really like the first one. Were you planning on using all of these graphics or were you wanting us to decide on which ones?
I always like to provide two drafts, just in case there's like a, a strong opinion either way.
Yeah.
I think, you know, like, I, I put the four, like, the four different messages onto the, like, the, like, the, the second one there that's got, like, less orange.
Yep.
Just, it's a higher contrast one, in my opinion, but like, I also like to make sure that when something is in a draft stage, that, that I'm never trying to, you know, say that this is the only way that it can go.
Mm-hmm.
So any feedback is always.
So I love the creativity with this. I like the color and the boldness of, of saying Even More Strathmore, because we're one of the few communities in Alberta that has more in our community, in our, in our town name. So let's use that to attract more business and have more and more, right? So I would just like to add that with neighbors, you definitely want to use the N-O, B-O-U-R-S spelling. I love the positivity. And then on the, the fourth graphic, small businesses have big impacts in your community. I would like to, that, to add to that, just small businesses give back. Because our businesses in Strathmore, that is one thing, they give back hugely to the community. And so just to highlight that impact, I would really like to see that. Otherwise, Geoff, great job. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor.
Thank you for your input, councillor Bauer. Some really good ideas there. Former deputy mayor Montgomery.
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, I just wanted to echo the fellow councillors and just say, yeah, good job. And one thing that I really liked about it is that there is a plan for succession. Too often, things get taken on and then not kind of let go. So I'm glad that, that we're going into this with a plan to let it go, so thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Peterson.
Like a frozen song. Geoff, thank you. I just wanted to know if there's a measurement component so that we can gauge the effectiveness on the, on the spend and the campaign?
Definitely. So the, the goals that I've set for this, for the first stage of it, we'll be ordering 300 decals. I'd like to see 150 of those distributed within the first week. And then in terms of, like, our scheduled social media posts, those are the, the digital decals, that will have a total impact of, well, I'm guessing about 500 likes and about 200 shares. But then the contest, we'd see, like, I've set a target there for 60 entries with 1,500 likes and 300 shares. I'd like to, I'd like to see some media support, both from the Strathmore Times and then the radio station as well, so that I would judge the first phase as a success if we hit an estimated earned media of $3,000.
Thank you. So on the digital side, I think that's great, but from, from the actual economic impact on the businesses themselves, are, do they have some component or some part to play in actually evaluating this? Something that would be easy enough for them to accumulate data month to month or week over week?
And I'd like to go anecdotally on that. It's, like, I think that it's very easy, not very easy, it's, there are established benchmarks for, like, for media value, but.
Right.
I think that there's a lot of businesses that don't have a, like, a solid, like, trend line of, of every February having X amount of sales, for us to be able to look at that and say, is it X plus five or X plus 10? So I think that, I would love to see that from, from some of the stores and I hope that, that we can get that kind of measurement back from them. But besides that, I think that's, even just looking at the contest and seeing what entries are there and talking to the, talking to those shops about that and saying, like, finding out what, what the impact of that is. Because I think that some of this too, like, yes, I hope that we'll see an immediate impact in February, but some of it too is, is like I said, about a long-term effect, that hopefully we can see that this first campaign will have a, have stronger results for, say, like, May, June, and then the second phase will have results for, like, the following quarter.
I know that when I speak to small businesses downtown, they all have benchmarking year over year.
Yeah.
I think, I think it would be just useful for the, for the chamber, maybe even to take a, a lead on that. And, and if there was some relatively straightforward process that they could utilize, I, I think that, that it would be, you know, conditional on our future help. And that would be incentivize businesses to, to do this kind of benchmarking, because without it, I, I'm not comfortable simply with anecdotal reporting, because I think it can go either way. People are overly optimistic or overly pessimistic, and I don't think it's useful for us to make financial decisions based on those kinds of operative processes. So I'd like to see something more fundamental if we, if we could. And I understand that's not your responsibility. I, I like what you're doing, but maybe the chamber could take, take a lead on it, but just even in the sense of encouraging and offering, offering processes, it would be also a, a good opportunity to involve community futures. Because they have available processes for, for this kind of work as well. Into the future might give us some, some good opportunity with information to work on.
Definitely.
And I just, the reason that I know that this, that this is effective and, you know, sometimes the advantage of, of living long, in, in a huge downturn in the economy in the early eighties in this community, even, it happened before I moved here. And, and then for a time after, banks became involved in actually doing an actual kind of a script that they gave, that they loaned to people in July, they called it Christmas in July, and they offered interest-free loans to anybody wanting to, to start their Christmas shopping early, but they had to use the money in town. And they had a simplistic but very effective measurement process in place, and it was extremely effective. And if I remember correctly, when, when I came to town, I think there were only two banks involved in it, but it was very, very effective for the businesses in terms of, of local shopping.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Peterson. Thank you for your presentation. It's much appreciated. And I think the simplicity of the idea too is, is a great thing, so thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much, councillor.
And that brings us to item 6.2, secondary suite approval options. Justin, good morning and welcome.
Good morning. How are you? I do, I do have a presentation, if you'd like one. That's what come up.
How's it first, Tracy?
Oh, great.
You're also a bit of wine. Council or broken?
First you laugh. That's okay, it's not shiny. It's okay.
Does that help?
Thank you, council, for this opportunity. We're just here today to discuss some options for the town moving forward in order to help approve the secondary suite approval process. This is to help in the sense of removing red tape, providing more certainty to applicants and builders, reducing costs and reducing time for, for the overall approvals. So at the end of last year, if you remembered, the town, it was a really exciting time for the town in terms of reintroducing secondary suites. As you know, the use is not a current listed use in our bylaw, so we had to go through two land use amendments. So this was approved by council in the communities of Lakewood for one suite that was existing and the new phase four of Wildflower Ranch. We really didn't receive any, I would say, formal kind of letters or opposition. There were some initial concerns, but staff did a great job meeting with all the residents and, as I said, some of them actually requested their letters to be withdrawn. So we really feel from an educational and engagement standpoint, not only these applications, but everyone moving forward, we have the tools in place to be able to engage and educate residents moving forward. So this approval by council really followed in the steps of our, our current MDP, which encourages secondary suites as a tool to provide different housing forms and types if the parking requirements can be met. And again, following on from our engagement we've done last year, where there was a real focus on providing a more diverse housing form and increasing the levels of affordability in the town. So one of the, the guiding principles was provide more housing choice within different areas in Strathmore, which we've done through these land use amendments. What, some, some extra steps we've taken through the permits are parking enforcement through the DP, which controls the parking, ensuring land use and building code compliance, as well as we're also going to be creating a secondary suites registry. So everyone that has a legal suite will have a registry, that we're going to have a sticker, kind of what's, what looks like on the right-hand side there, so they can actually mark it their suite when they're renting it. It's good for also as well our fire teams, when they go out to homes, they'll know that there's a suite there. And we're going to track and monitor these. So really, at the end of the day, I think we've really shown that this step has been a really great tool for homeowners, tenants and also people in the community. So I don't want to walk through each point because we've gone through these, but the aim of this is really to make this now easier for builders, easier for developers and for people really to come forward to either legalize their suites in a more cost-effective, timely manner, as well as create new suites. So currently, we have a definition in our bylaw, which has been added through the direct control district to the previous two applications. So right now, suites can only occur through a DC land use. So the aim now is to include the secondary suite in our land use bylaw and list it as either a permitted or discretionary use in low-density land use districts. So essentially, one of the options which we'd like council to give us feedback on is to remove the, the land use amendment process. So the process currently is just on your left there. It's a land use amendment first, takes probably about three months in total and about $2,000 for the applicant. It goes through an internal review, we circulated to the adjacent residents, we posted on our website, we then come to council for first reading. If that's been given, we then post for the second and third reading and we then come to council for approval. Once that's approved, the use as listed is a permitted use and that will go through a DP application, which is, takes not too much time at all, just one week. So we're looking at right now an overall cost of about $2,500 for someone to come in to actually get a permit and the timeline of about three months. So one of the options we're looking, as I've said, is just to add the secondary suite use as a discretionary use in low-density districts. So essentially, this just becomes a discretionary use DP application, much like any ones we have right now. We go through a review and circulation, we post it on the website, we then receive comments. One, one potential that this does bring is that it could be, go through the SDB process and someone could appeal it, as they could any discretionary use application. So this reduces the fee quite considerably, but also reduces staff time a lot. So there's no coming to council, letters, mailouts, and the approval time is down to about six weeks. Again, I think in my report, we, I briefly just mentioned the larger intent of land use applications is when you change the overall intent of a site, that really kind of impacts planning or density or form, you know? And I think we've shown that adding the basement. Uh adding the basement suite to an existing home uh really does not uh meet those uh. Larger land use amendment rationale of why we come to council. And the second option is actually to go one step further is to actually make the basement suite only a permitted use. So again, this. This will remove any um public circulation or the adjacent uh notification. Uh removes any opportunities for an appeal um and significantly reduces the approval time. So. Um, happy to have the conversation as to which uh option you think is most appropriate, but we're. Certainly recommending as a start uh is to remove the land use amendment process. So this would just be for the basement suite. If someone wanted to propose the garage or the garden suite, um a, a very similar process to what they would do right now for uh. That they would still have to go through a uh land use amendment. We would have to create a use in the bylaw which would uh. Would, which would outline requirements for a garden or the garage and they would have to go through the DP. Um, so again, one option is just to uh add this use to the bylaw. Again, uh have a use in every low-density district. We would certainly recommend that this remain uh discretionary. Uh there's, there are form impacts when. Someone is building a new uh garden suite or above garage. So we do want to review. The architectural guidelines of that and the form and the, how it um. Um, it's kind of integrates with the surrounding environment. So we would not recommend that this go to the. Permitted uh use route, just because there are more physical and form impacts that we would like to review. Um, so again, we've heard really positive things back from the development industry. Uh. Once we had the Wildflower and Lakewood applications approved, uh we have a real estate and development email list that we send out updates to. We received really positive feedback from that. We've had numerous developers coming forward who are uh interested to, to. Move forward with having secondary suites in their areas. And uh again, if we do have to react to enforcing. Illegal suites, uh removing the land use process uh will be really important. Uh, kind of my experience working with the city for a long time on this was the land use process was really a massive. Uh barrier and a challenge for people. It's a cost. They have to come forward and speak. Some people are really comfortable coming forward, like you saw with the other guys. Some people aren't. So again, we're just really trying to remove red tape here, be more business-friendly, provide more certainty to applicants and. Reduce costs to them and as well staff time. So um we'd love some feedback on uh which. The options that you would like us to come back with.
Thank you for your presentation, Justin. Counselor Peterson.
Thank you, Your Worship. So, so Justin, when I, when I was looking at this, I, I have um. I, I appreciate that, that you've brought the options forward and, and I think that's a good conversation. But in terms of the cost, uh we're three times above the Calgary cost. Is there a reason for that?
Um, through the chair, is that from a, the land use application perspective?
Well, well, I know that, that uh like Calgary has waived their development permits like for, for secondary suites. I think it's seven hundred dollars all in. I think they charge um four hundred and seventy dollars for the development permit and. And uh two hundred and thirty for the registration.
Yes.
And um, so we're, you know, on, online in the second, not so much on the first, so.
Through the chair, so Calgary's waived the land use amendment.
Just for, just for now? Like I think in two thousand twenty, it's, or twenty twenty is back.
I'm not a hundred percent sure. I do believe they waived it. Um, because I know that it really took a long time at the city to really, literally a change of council.
Yes.
For those votes to be swung. So I know that it was probably about an eight-year battle to get the land use change and once the new council came in. So I, I. Do believe that they waived the land use process, so now.
Just, just till twenty twenty.
Just the DP, okay, yeah. So that's why the cost is so different because the first option we have includes the land use amendment process still.
Right.
So if we were to go to option two or three, it would just.
It would go back to the regular cost.
Two hundred and fifty dollars. That's what it, it would be.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Peterson. Counselor Cox. Oh, sorry, Counsel, Counselor Montgomery.
Uh, thank you, Your Worship. Um, thank you for this, Justin. Uh, I was wondering if like you. Would you recommend having almost like a hybrid system for the basement options where if it's, you know, within a certain, you know, like so some, some could be permitted. You know, some areas, let's say, could be permitted or under some circumstances, it'd be a permitted use and some areas would be a discretionary.
Through the chair, um again, just based on my experience on Calgary, um that's what they started. Uh, it sort of created, not really an us and them, but it sort of. Creates a discussion about why this community and not that one. I mean, what we're really trying to do is normalize this use and to say. Secondary suites is a uh typical, great option for people. Uh, if it meets code, it just should be a regular use. I get your points. I, I know that Calgary's first step was to make it uh the second option in uh new communities. So they had a new land use. Uh that they added that in so people could go. But I think in our research and from my experience, most municipalities eventually get to this point. Is that we're all trying to just make sure, I just say that suites are a illegal acceptable use and. Uh we have the mechanisms and tools to enforce it. So um that's certainly something that we could look at. Uh, my recommendation kind of personally would be um if we're comfortable saying that, that this use is. Is acceptable in any community and if it's done the right way, that to go down that route.
Okay. Um. All right. Thank you very much for answering that.
Thank you, Counselor Montgomery. Counselor Cox.
Thank you, Your Worship. Um, just a couple little things. If we go to permitted use. Um, it says approval time is only one week.
Yeah.
Well, how does that work when it's a, it's already there, let's say? They've come in, they've paid their application fee of two hundred and fifty dollars, but now doesn't it have to be inspected?
Through the chair, so the approval time to say that you have a development permit uh would be one week.
Oh, okay.
Then go through the building permit.
So there is still a process after they've, that, so when you say one.
About the building permit stage, but it, this is just the time to get to the building permit stage where they get approvals to, to build or to renovate or to. Uh retrofit and then we send inspectors up to ensure that they've met the code.
Okay, so this is just initial.
Yeah.
And then my next question went to the garden suite thing. Do we not have some garden suites in Strathmore already?
Through the chair, we do. Uh, they're through a DC land use district. So similarly to Wildflower Phase Four. Uh at the time when the developer came in, there was a specific land use.
So a whole section was designated that way?
Exactly. So exactly the same as the Wildflower Phase Four right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Cox. Counselor Bauer.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you for your report, Justin. My, uh, you just touched on very briefly non-compliance. So I'd like to know. What are the current fines and are you thinking of increasing or decreasing those fines based on this adjustment with the permit process?
Through the chair, um, we're trying to encourage people to legalize their suites. So the individual that came from Lakewood, uh we were. Reported that uh he had a suite that was not in code. We gave him an option to either. Come forward to legalize it and pay the fees and go through the process, or that the town would uh fine him for having an. Illegal use. So thankfully, he took the step to legalize it. And again, uh based upon my experience in Calgary, the. Easier you make it for people to legalize it and if they are found out, uh the more you're going to have. If someone decides, um, I don't have the fine at the. Top of my head, I can definitely get back to you, but we would fine them for having a uh illegal use that does not meet their development permit.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bauer. Counselor Sobel.
Thank, thank you, Your Worship. Thanks, Justin, for all this. So uh very early in your presentation, I think you, you focused on the uh, the need for education and I, I totally agree with you. I think this is. This whole process is, is, is focused on the need for education and uh, and, and you know, the. A, a good example of how that works is with the letters of concern that were raised with our uh previous decisions. That were actually withdrawn once the, once the full uh envelope of information was received and there was more understanding. Uh, but for tho- for those reasons, I, I, I like the idea of discretionary use on, on, on both um areas. Um, simply because I, 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 I think it's important to give people the opportunity to voice their concerns and to receive that information. I mean, we can be proactive and uh, and uh put articles in the paper, et cetera, but until that's, that's happening to your, your, your neighbor next door. You're not really reading that stuff. It's only when, after, after you find out that one's going in next door, you have some concerns and you're able to come by. So I think that. The time, and I think it's a reasonable time, four to six weeks, the fee uh being reduced by, I don't know how many hundreds of percent. Uh, but it's considerable from twenty-two, from twenty-five hundred to two hundred and fifty dollars. Bless you. Um, I think it's a, it's a reasonable uh approach to this. I, I support uh secondary suites, especially. How it will affect um presumably our rental rates in, in, in our community. There's a lot of good things about this and one of the things I. I always uh, I, you know, any, any, anything that comes forward for, in regards to this decision, I'm always looking at what the negative. Uh aspects are. And it's clear to me that secondary suites, although they seem to have a, a, a negative connotation. They really, once you, once you get down to it and once you get all the information on it, they're really, that really isn't the case. So. Um, personally, I would, I, I, I would like to see discretionary uh uh use on, on, on both areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Sobel. Deputy Mayor Corbial.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you, Justin, for the report. Um, I do have a question. For, so discretionary use. Will that be at the town's discretion as well as public?
Through the chairs. So uh discretionary use means that we circulate the application. Um, it allows for. I would say minor. Deviance from what the requirements are. So we're allowed to relax it or look at ways to move it forward. Permitted use basically means if you meet all requirements, there's no opportunities for people to comment or to appeal. So. Um, something like a single-family home in a low-density district is always permitted because that's the true intent of what that is. Um, so um we would review comments. We would review uh suggestions on potentially how to improve it as part of that process.
So we don't, obviously don't have that thing yet. So we wouldn't even have like even a checklist of what some of those requirements would be. I wouldn't mind seeing those before I would even actually make a decision.
Yeah, so the, if I just go back to the land use in question, I know it's pink in the background and we have to, so these, so this would be the land use. For a secondary suite, you know, so first we review what the use would be. Um, and then that the suite would have to have one parking stall. Uh, that's a, that's identified on the site. And that's really based upon the research of what we're looking at is that parking's been one of the biggest concerns. So. Uh, really, we would look at, can you, can you provide the parking? Uh, is it in a single-family dwelling? I know some uh communities have taken a step to actually allow secondary suites in semi-detached, which is another big step. Uh, that causes more problems with parking, but I think right now we're just saying it's in single detached. So because this isn't a new. Structure or a new, it's quite straightforward, really. It's saying, you know, you've got the suite downstairs, we're, we're. Uh, or the area downstairs, you, you've got opportunities to have a secondary entrance. These are the code requirements. Uh, so we would give them that. Uh development permit and then through the, the, the building permit process is where it becomes more uh regulated, that they would have to meet all these. Requirements.
Yeah, I think mostly parking and traffic. I think that was a big concern of a lot of people as well. So, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Corbial. Counselor Cox.
Sorry. Just wanted to go back a bit. Um. Agree that education is extremely important in this, but I really like the fact that, that we are moving to an all-inclusive. Community where we actually can have people that, that have lower incomes, that have places to live. I am one hundred percent on board with your permitted use. Um, I don't think that it would be. Prudent to discretionary use half of the town and, and have it already permitted in other places. So. I, I, I think in terms of what we've all discussed and where we're going as far as inclusivity. Uh, I'm in favor of your permitted use. Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Cox. So are you looking, you're, you're, you and your staff are looking for direction from us as far as. Which of the approaches to?
Back both these options. Um, if you're comfortable providing a recommendation for us right now, that will obviously make it easier when we come back, but again, we can.
Would council like to hear both discretionary and permitted, or do you feel you have enough to kind of give direction to the staff? Counselor Sobel?
Well, I'd be fine. Uh, I, once again, I still stick with discretionary, but I, I, I just question, there, there is no permitted use for secondary suites at this point.
Uh, the two land use amendments that were approved by council are.
Right, but for new ones, there is no permitted use.
Right now, it's the process on the left-hand side of your screen. So there is no listed use for secondary suite in our bylaw right now. So the only way to get one is to go through a land use amendment that specifically lists that as a use in that district.
Um, that being said, uh, I'm more leaning towards discretionary use just because. You, you give the opportunity for people to, to be heard if they do have some concerns. But it still looks like it's a much more streamlined and much more affordable process than what we currently use. So. Um, council, any other comments for them? Counselors Peterson?
Possibly unrelated, but I, I noticed when I, when I was looking at, at this whole process and looking at other communities and, and in, in our, in Alberta, mostly cities. They very quickly moved from, from discretionary use to permitted use to, to condos. Semi-detached row housing and basement, very, very quickly.
Yes.
Is it reasonable to think that that might be the same case here?
Through the chair, um, people are always looking for different housing forms. And levels of affordability. So those are the, the forms of houses and the tenures that encourage that the most. I think people are looking to make better use of existing. Uh, infrastructure and services, better use of their homes. So there's no reason to say why not. I mean.
When I, when I look at the guiding principle that, that drove your work, I guess I, I'm, it makes me move more toward permitted use. Uh, in, in terms of meeting that, but for my part, I'd like a little bit more time to think about it and, you know, would like to see it come back.
Through the chair, I mean, something we can definitely do is, you know, take not baby steps, but take it in a couple of steps. So we'll see how this goes for the first year. You know, if, if we don't receive any uh, you know, major appeals, if we have ten applications that don't go to S, S D A B, then. The next logical step would then be to come back to say we've gone through this. We haven't heard any levels of concern. We're now recommending it to be. Permitted. So if that makes council overall more comfortable to take it in stages, but the overall intent is to still get to that. Permitted use where.
Exactly my perspective, yep.
We're happy to go down that route.
Sounds like a good compromise between the two. Um, Counselor Montgomery.
Uh, I was just gonna say that I, I would prefer if we just uh, you know, gave it another week to kind of think about it and uh, you know, collect more information.
Okay. Thank you very much, counselors, and thank you for your presentation. So how far would you be as far as coming back to us with some more discussion and. Bringing the two forward?
We have everything.
Okay.
Ready right now. I said, it would, we got the use in place already. It's just uh coming back with the bylaw and.
So Jennifer, could that come, that between you and Justin, that can easily be put on next week's agenda? Is that enough time? No? Okay. Ryan?
If I may, Your Worship, I think especially in light of um Counselor Corbial's request for checklists and some additional information. My recommendation would be that we bring this at some point in February and that gives staff some time as well, not only to prepare the bylaw, but to prepare the information packets we'd be. Distributing, even work with comms a bit to talk about how we would be messaging this uh to the public so that we can present a complete package to council. So that would be. My recommendation moving forward is that we give council not just the bylaw to give first readings on, but also. Information, a communication strategy, just the whole roll-up package. So if we could request council's forbearance and. Yeah, let us a couple of weeks to bring this in February for consideration.
Okay, thank you very much for that. That makes a lot of sense.
Your Worship.
Uh, Counselor Peterson? Uh, Counsel Peterson?
So, so in addition to the choices that you've brought forward here, and, and if we take more time, i- is it, um, reasonable to ask for, for that choice that, that you recommended or that, or that, uh, option that you recommended to, to do the discretionary use for one year, put in a, put in place like a three-point assessment, if, if then assessment, and then move to permitted use if we haven't seen, uh, any difficulties in, in those terms? I, I would be really interested in looking at something like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Peterson. Thank you for your presentation and we look forward to hearing back from you in February. Uh, I believe we don't have any urgent business, so I'm looking for a motion to come out of in camera.
I move to go in camera.
Sorry, to come out of committee of the hall. That's what I meant. Thank you. It's still morning, early morning. All in favor? And I'm looking for a motion to go in camera.
I move to go in camera.
We have a motion to go in camera. All in favor? And we're going in camera at 9:39.